If appropriate, address the matter at a subsequent meeting. Minutes, they were fairly brief, so.
Any edits, comments?
Like to make a motion to approve the planning commission minutes from April tenth, twenty twenty three.
I second the motion.
Janine, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Right, we have no old business. We'll start in on our new business. First item is State of the City from Mayor Thomas.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. I apologize for the delay on the microphone. I'm used to seeing things turn different colors and it just went directly to red here. So, and I've been told that red means go. So that's different than green means go. Alright, well, I just wanted to take a moment this evening to talk with you a little bit about the state of the city. So every year, the Monroe Chamber of Commerce invites me to come and give a state of the city, which is sort of like a State of the Union or State of the State address. It's commonly done at, these sorts of things are commonly done at things like Chamber of Commerce or Economic Alliance. I heard feedback from folks that not everybody was able to take the time and attend, you know, to attend first. There is a limited amount of space at the cabin at the Evergreen Fairgrounds. And in addition to that, you have to pay to get in. So, you know, you have to to pay to have a lunch and all this other stuff. And so in terms of hearing from the mayor about what's going on, there's an issue, if you will, with equity with being able to attend and and all these other things. So talking with our city administrator Administrator Knight a little bit about it. She felt that it would be valuable for me to just go and talk to each of the commissions and boards a little bit about the State of the City address. I am not going to present this the same way that I did with the chamber. And the reason for that is that I, as a speaker, have a tendency to speak off the cuff. I am not somebody that usually speaks well from a script, or at least I don't like doing that. I like looking at your eyeballs and I like seeing your heads go up and down or go like this or go, you know, but I like to be able to engage with people. And for that reason, every time I speak, it can be a little bit different. So I apologize for that ahead of time. Chair, I would look to you if the commissioners during my presentation have any questions, I'd be willing to entertain those during that time. We're at the end of the presentation, so I will be looking to you, Chair, as a facilitator for the meeting, if somebody has a question to respond.
Okay, so interruptions are fine.
Yes. Very well. I'm very formal in how I do things. And so I will turn to you as the chair rather than just taking questions from the commissioner. So I'll look to you if you feel that you'd like me to to answer any questions. Okay, alright. Okay, so the twenty twenty three State of the City, we'll go ahead and move on to the to the next page. So one of the things that is important for me to do as a mayor is kind of remind people of civics. So, couple of things to remember. First, I am not the head of the City of Monroe. Remember, just like President, President is not head of our government. We have three branches of government, just like we do at the federal level. You have a mayor, which is the head of the executive branch. You have the council, which are seven council members. And you also have here in this jurisdiction, a municipal judge. So we have a judicial branch as well. When I speak, I speak for myself. When I speak regarding policy, those sorts of things, I need to make certain that I am saying that this is how I feel about something. Otherwise, if it is something that I know that the council agrees with, I will simply state that the policy is this, and I know that that's the policy of the council. Remember, your council is responsible for policy and budget. Your judicial branch is responsible for making judicial decisions. So here they, those would be up to a misdemeanor, I'm sorry, gross misdemeanor, which could be three hundred and sixty-four days in jail. Anything that goes beyond that, that's criminal then goes to Superior Court, but that's the extent of Judge Ness's work. And then, as I said, the council is responsible for policy and budget. You all advise both the mayor and also the council, you know, and advise the judge. I don't think anybody advises the judge. She pretty much does things on her own. We don't have any sort of boards or commissions for her. As part of what I do, I do acknowledge the great work that our boards and commissions are doing. We have the Planning Commission, of course, you're the longest standing border commission. We have the Parks Board, that's the second longest standing. We then have the Civil Service Commission. That is the commission, I think, of three people that review the the names of people who are interested in serving as police officers here. We then have the Economic Development, I'm sorry, the Salary Commission. They're the, they're the ones that review the salaries of your elected officials every year. We do not make the decision on how much we make as elected officials. Instead, the Salary Commission makes the decision and we have to live with whatever they come up with. If there's a raise in a given year, that means that people get that raise if they reduce your pay, which they're able to do. That takes effect at the beginning of the next term. So that's how that works. And then and then we have an Ethics Board that we have openings on because of changes in code. That board is only there to review complaints when those come forward. There were changes at the state level regarding with the RCW that made it so that the Ethics Board is is not as necessary as it used to be. And that board is not, as with most of these boards, they're not proactive where you come up with new rules and things like that. Instead, the staff bring things to you. So that is another border commission that we have. And then we have the Economic Development Advisory Board, which a couple of you have served on, that's pretty recent. And now the Community Human Services Advisory Board. So we have all these different boards and commissions. Each one of you delves into things in greater detail and makes recommendations to the executive branch and also to the legislative branch to develop policy, to develop budgets, and from my side to implement or, you know, execute things, the executive branch. We can't do any of this without our city staff. I hope each one of you recognizes that it is not the person that makes all the money that makes all the work occur in this country. It's actually the labor that makes all that work. You actually generate the wealth in this country, even though the capital seems to reflect wealth. It is the same thing with local government. The success that I have as a mayor, the success that the council members have is completely on the work of the great people to my left here. So please always remember that we are successful because of these folks over here and always thank them for the work that they do. Lastly, we have a bunch of volunteers and partners. I think that there are a lot of people that don't understand that that we have a lot of services that we provide for in our community where we contract for those services. I don't think people quite realize that when we talk about human services and we talk about people who are unhoused and things like that, that a lot of that is done by private sector, not for profits, rather than being done through the government. And there are some very significant positive things associated with it, but there are also some negative things associated with it. Those organizations and people that work in those organizations don't get compensated as much as if they were FTEs working for a local government. And I understand why there's a tendency to engage nonprofits rather than fold those into into government. But the negative part is that you end up with a master's degree to help somebody who has chemical dependency, mental behavioral health issues, and you may only be making sixty thousand dollars a year and have a hundred thousand dollars in debt from a bachelor's and a master's degree because that's what it takes to do the job. So we can't deliver the services we have here without not just our volunteers, but also our partners that do a lot of work in our community. Okay? Can you go ahead and move on to the next slide? And not all of them will go this long, but I I wanted to share those with you because I I know that you are commissioners. So for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we adopted our first two-year budget. This is a biennial budget. Previously, we did budgeting every single year. This coming go around, what we've done is a two-year budget. We've identified how much we anticipate expending and how much revenue we anticipate coming in for each of the years separately. And and so it's a different way of budgeting. What it does is it theoretically reduces the amount of time that our staff will have to spend in the fall putting together a brand-new budget. And what we will do instead throughout this year is make some smaller adjustments and then one larger adjustment in the fall around the budget. So we're hoping that this will streamline some processes. What's really important is that whenever we go through a budget update, there is the possibility that very significant changes can occur. Those very significant changes cause inefficiencies. Where today, the staff may be working on one project or one program. You suddenly change everything and it becomes very inefficient because they can't finish something that if they only had two more months in the next biennium, they'd they'd be able to finish. So the other part of this is that the biennium is more consistent with what the State of Washington does. They have a biennium process as well. The total amount of the budget is a hundred and ninety-eight million dollars in expenditures. It is a balanced budget. We took what I call a reverse, I'm sorry, a risk averse set of revenue assumptions. Some people might call that conservative. I just call it risk averse. So we assumed that we would have a potential economic downturn during this this two-year biennium. We fully funded our contingencies that gives us options to manage through a significant economic downturn if it does occur. So we have essentially a rainy day fund and we haven't had to touch it while I've been serving as mayor. In fact, we built it up to be fully funded and we've kept it there while I've been serving as mayor with the council. So we did not, we're one of the only cities and probably the only city in the area that did not have to lay anybody off during the during the pandemic, the early part of the pandemic. We immediately in twenty twenty, I gave direction to the staff that we were not going to do certain things and we created savings from not doing that and not doing things. And because we had a contingency fund and everything, we had a place to go in the event that we had to actually expend funds. In addition to that, we do a lot of work with our county, state and federal levels of government to share in the cost of delivering services. So we we have a contract for government affairs. It's about forty-five thousand dollars or so per year. We were able to generate in this last legislative cycle two hundred thousand dollars in operating expenditures to help out with human services. That's around chemical dependency and mental behavioral health. And we also were able to generate one point one or one point two million dollars for the municipal campus work that we're doing with a therapeutic court. So that fifty-ish thousand-dollar investment with a government affairs firm allowed us to generate about one point one and a half to to one point five million, yeah, about one point five million dollars worth of between operating and capital. In addition to that, we were able to move something up in our transportation budget for the state. Five-two-two was pushed back into the future, just like with you, with your capital facilities plans that you review and the TIP. There is a, there's a plan that's like a six-year plan as to when we're going to spend money to do projects. Five-two-two got, kept getting punted later and later in that plan. It's like, yeah, it's funded, yeah, but it's funded six years from now. The legislature was able to move expenditures for right away and for design into the second biennium. So it's not next year, but it's a couple of years after that, which is better than in the sixth year, which is what we originally started with. So we were able to get some wins there. The real wins are the operating at two hundred thousand for human services and also the therapeutic court here. We also are working with our partners on the federal level. A couple of us went to DC just over a month ago. Met with our two senators and also our our representative Del Benet. They're always happy to see us and we talked about funding for the therapeutic court. We have received money from the federal government through Del Benet's office for the mobile mental health work that we're doing in 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 partnership with the City of Sultan and with Snohomish County, where we have sort of an emergency responder, if you will, that is trained in mental behavioral health that is supposed to be co responding with fire and PD. And so that's only one person. Obviously, the person's not on board twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And we're, we're, we would love to make that a more robust response. As I've tried to explain to people, I was a firefighter at one point in time. The police department always showed up unseen. They never picked up a hose because that wasn't their job. It's the same thing when we talk about mental and behavioral health, chemical dependency and things like that. Your crisis responders who have training in in working with people with chemical dependency, mental behavioral health issues, they're just like a firefighter. They know how to work with people that are having those sorts of issues. PD should still, in my opinion, show up on scene, just like they do with firefighters, to make certain that the scene is secure and everything. But those people who are trained in that sort of work should be going and responding. To me, that's the type of work we should be doing and it's what we're doing here. And it's what the federal government has helped to provide us with. I think it was four hundred thousand dollars toward. So in short, we continue to take cautious, informed and realistic approach to funding services, projects and programs, and we continue working with our partners to help deliver those services. You all know Imagine Monroe, so I'm not going to go into high, high level of detail with this. You know that a lot of the work you do as planning commissioners is is implementing Imagine Monroe. And I think I've already spoken with you as a group and probably a couple of you individually about how we're implementing Imagine Monroe here. We're doing a lot of work where I've spoken with commissioners and board members about Imagine Monroe. We internally, in addition to the top parts of this, have been working on diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging with our staff and with our partners. And so we're doing a lot of work in this space right now because it's the right thing to do for a business perspective, from a moral perspective, and from just an individual perspective. We want to make certain that people can come to the front counter and be themselves. We want to make certain that you can come to work and bring your whole person to work. So these are the sorts of things that we're doing here with Imagine Monroe, in addition to the waterways and locally supported businesses and everything. But with that said, I've talked to you about this before. Everything we do connects back to Imagine Monroe. And so what I'm going to do then is I'm going to talk just through a couple of these things we're doing related to Imagine Monroe. On the next screen, you're going to see supporting locally owned businesses. We're doing a lot here to in Monroe to support our local businesses. You've seen our gateway signs that have popped up, the big monument signs that are Monroe, that are white and that are blue. But you've also seen in downtown, the historic downtown Monroe signs that have gone up, those sort of little gateway signs to our downtown. And I'm sure you've seen on social media. If you haven't yet, take a look under the City of Monroe. We've got some new wayfinding signs that are that are coming here. And this is going to create that nice look and feel that will help people find their way around our city. And these are really important things to help support our growing community and our growing businesses. We also have the Choose Monroe magazine. Where where we are working on selling and promoting the businesses here in Monroe. We also have a tourism promotion marketing that we're involved in. We've done a lodging needs study to figure out whether or not we need more hotels. That sort of thing will be something that you'll be dealing with maybe through the comp plan. Do we need more hotels? And if so, where would you put them? And then we're working on a downtown parking study, or we've hired a firm to take a look at our downtown parking and figure out what we can do differently with our downtown parking. And for those of you that haven't been around since twenty oh three like me and eight, downtown parking comes up every two to three years. So, you know, those of you that are going to continue serving beyond me as mayor, you'll you'll deal with this again. The other thing will be signs, right? Okay. So just letting you know that we're doing a lot around supporting locally owned businesses. The other thing too is that during the pandemic, there are a lot of jurisdictions that kept the cares dollars and American Rescue Program dollars. This city didn't do that. We knew that the need was out there, not within city, not within city hall. As I said, we had already cut expenditures here. We were able to maintain staff that we needed. And we ended up getting the money out the door to help people, where there were some other cities and counties that kind of held on to the money. We pushed it out the door and probably hundreds of thousands of dollars in assistance went out to businesses in addition to residents, human services and everything. And so when we talk about supporting locally owned businesses, we've we've done things like that, including through the pandemic. We've been just under the next slide, supporting a variety of choices for work, dining, shopping and activities. We just have some pictures there of some of the businesses that have opened up. I I went to Wingstop on Saturday because I didn't feel like cooking. Those of you that seem on social media, you know, I cook a lot. I didn't feel like cooking. They had good chicken wings. For those of you that that aren't vegetarian or vegan, they're good chicken wings. I'd recommend trying them out. But we've got a lot of businesses that have left, but we've got a lot of businesses that have come here before. And so I I think that that's something that's been great. So with with both of these, with supporting locally owned businesses and supporting a variety of choices for work, dining, shopping and activities, one of the things that I shared with the chamber was the work that you're doing on Planning Commission as part of the comp plan update. Where my hope is you're going to get some information about rents and leases and things like that, especially in our downtown. One of the complaints I've heard is that there's a lot of turnover with our businesses in the downtown. And one of the things I've heard from some of our business owners that left was just how difficult it is working with building owners that may not live in the area. You know, these are investment properties and the way that leases are written, sometimes after they do all these tenant improvements after roughly two years, they're not able to make a go of it because the the lease value ends up going up or something like that. I've never seen one myself, but these are the things I've been hearing since twenty oh three. And there are things you're going to continue hearing. But getting that sort of information will help us understand how it is we might be able to bring in more choices for restaurants and work and activities in our downtown. We're also to the next slide, doing a lot around creating stronger connections. We have some actual physical connections that we've been making. You'll see in the bottom left-hand corner of the the four pictures up there, the physical connection that has been made across the fairgrounds. One of the things that was really important to me living here for such a long time was creating a a a better appearance to the fairgrounds. What was there before was just a chain link fence with barbed wire on the top on the other side of a ditch. And I used to watch people walking from roughly where the hospital is and attached housing over there over to the fairgrounds. I even frequently saw a couple of people with wheelchairs along the side of a road where frequently accidents occur. There's something about that stretch in front of the fairgrounds where people have a tendency to rear end people. They're not usually hard, high-speed collisions, but for some reason, there's something about that stoplight and something about going underneath the the bridge. And for some reason, you think that you're open up, but there's a stoplight. And I I felt that it was really important and we heard comments from one member of the public that it was really important to have grades separated, I'm sorry, separated, a separated pathway. And so we were able to work with the county and also with the state to get funding and put in the improvements that you see there today. So whether it's that or finishing up the walkway on Chain Lake Road, for those of you that live up there, we've been doing a lot of things to better connect community. And that's just in the last year or two. Other things we've been doing to create stronger connections include improving our parks. We had a meeting with the Parks Board about three weeks ago in this room here where we were talking about Blueberry Park. They're going to be redeveloping Blueberry Park as part of a stormwater project out there. Something that's been really irritating me. It's taken three years to do it and I understand why. And I I can't tell you all the reasons why on this one. But it would have been nice if we, if those reasons hadn't come up and we could have taken care of it sooner. But in addition to that, we also have creating strong connections with the festivals and the events that we're doing. So, you know, whether whether that is National Night Out or it is the multicultural event that MEC is doing, the Equity Council is doing, or its pride, we are doing a lot around trying to partner with different organizations that are are holding events here in town. So I, those sorts of things are really important to to make certain that we have a community where everybody has a sense of belonging. The other thing too that we're doing in terms of creating strong connections is we're trying to recruit people to boards and commissions and other positions that have different lived experiences. And going back to my conversation about Blueberry about three weeks ago with Parks Board, one of the things that we benefited from was somebody who lives near Blueberry, who has a different lived experience and different background than me, talking about the things that would look better there. And so rather than having the the rubber mat where kids are going to be playing on, looking one way, they were talking about making it look like a creek and all this other stuff to fit in culturally with that area. There was an interest in having brighter colors and having monarch butterflies. And so we've gone from we've gone from one feel to what could be Blueberry to another field that that should fit in with the community that lives around the park better. So we're doing a lot of things to create stronger connections and a lot of it is physical and then a lot of it is relationship as well. So that's informing policy and it's creating actual stronger physical connections as well in our community. So to the next page then, to be a safe place. When we talk about being a safe place and I've used that term with a couple of people, I don't know that people always realize that safe place is not just law enforcement. Safe place means that I can walk into a space and I can feel like I belong. So I walk in here and I I feel that I know you. I feel that you're going to be welcoming to me. I feel that you're not going to prejudge who I am. So making certain Monroe is a safe place means making certain that it's a safe place for all of our residents, our employers, our visitors. It means coordinating with law enforcement and our judicial system and human services. But it also means recognizing and engaging with people with different backgrounds and different lived experiences. It means advocating with and for people who've been marginalized or underrepresented, both in the past and also today. But it also means adopting policies, budgets, operations that ensure a more inclusive, equitable and safe community for all. So when we talk about safe place, again, I want to emphasize it's not just law enforcement, but it's in everything that we do. We want to make certain that whether you're going to the park or you are going to a festival or you are coming here to City Hall, that Monroe is a safe place for you to be, where you feel welcome, where you feel that you belong. And that then gets again into the policies and budgets that we've already talked about. The reasons why you're working on the comprehensive plan, looking at things like diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Those are requirements under RCW. It's also the right thing to be doing. So you'll be working with that as well. We then talk a little bit about making certain that you feel at home, you feel that you belong. And again, that gets into the community, into some of the things I've already said. Where we are improving our outreach and engagement with more diverse communities here in Monroe. We're trying to do better at recruiting for all city roles, including boards and commissions, volunteer opportunities, elected office and staff positions. We're doing more to try to ensure that we're more inclusive and with how we have a representation of voices that inform and on how we develop policies, budgets and how we deliver services and projects. So some of the things we're doing with staff positions, just as an example, we are looking at updating our our descriptions, our job descriptions for what it takes to maybe become a planner. I used to work as a planner and there are places that require AICP, that's a certified planner. I stopped my AICP probably ten years ago. I did that. You don't need to know all the details here, but it was it was sixty dollars, it was sixty, fifty dollars a month. That was expensive, six hundred dollars a year to keep four. Okay, so apparently that's still the case. That's fifty dollars a month, six hundred dollars a year to maintain four letters at the end of my name. It creates a barrier to entry for people that might have that bachelor's degree to become planners. You don't need an AICP to be a planner. And I've seen places that require master's degrees where it's preferred. Again, you might be looking at a hundred thousand dollars with a bachelor's and a master's degree and loans and everything. You don't need a master's to be a planner. I would argue that you don't need a bachelor's to be a planner. One of the things that we look at though is we take a look at those job descriptions and we do equivalencies. So if you have a master's that counts maybe as six years of experience, you see what I'm saying? If you have the AICP, that might count as an extra year of experience. But we don't, what what we don't do is we don't discount the years of experience. If you've got the six years of experience, that should be equal to whatever the equivalency is with the education. So by making those sorts of changes, we're able to attract So by making those sorts of changes, we're able to attract people to these jobs that maybe we're not able to afford to go and earn that master's degree or earn that bachelor's degree, but have been, they've been able to demonstrate that they're able to do that kind of work. So that's just one of the examples. The other thing too, is that we have a requirement for a high school diploma or a G E D to, to do work, including, including for seasonal work here. I'm sorry, for, for work out in the field, you know, working, you know, with our parks. Doing, doing field work and things like that. I don't really feel that you need to have a G E D or a high school diploma to do some of that. Why do we have that requirement? It just change, it just puts in an artificial limitation for people that can legitimately do that work, but for whatever reason, just don't have a high school diploma or G E D. So these are the types of things that we're looking at from a standpoint of equity and inclusion to make certain that people who can do the job can still apply for the job. Even if they, you know, don't have that hundred thousand dollar master's degree. Or for whatever reason, we're not able to get the high school diploma or G E D and they're looking at mowing lawns and things like that here. So that's some of, that's just some of the things that we are doing here to try to make certain that we are getting the best employees that we can. That are more represented, more representative of our community. And remove artificial barriers to do work here. All right. I had some notes in there for the Chamber of Commerce. Hashtag finish five two two. That obviously has come in bond. We were going to have a second finish five two two meeting in May because the state legislature is back back into, is going back into session to try to resolve issues around the Blake decision. They are not going to be coming out to my knowledge right now for that follow-up meeting in May, but we're going to try to get something scheduled here soon to talk more about five two two. And then of course, we've been advertising and promoting the community open house, which was on the thirteenth. You all attended that. And I'm sorry, I learned from Kate this evening that you all were supposed to have your own table and do the tabletop exercise. So those of you that I suggested that you not go to other tables. Apparently you had your own table and I'm sorry about that. So you get to do that this evening. Right? Yeah, I'm sorry, Kate. Yeah, but apparently our council is doing something too, but they could have done that that evening as well. And I was concerned about about us intermingling with other people and how that might influence things. So anyway, as, as we end, you know, just the last words of Imagine Monroe. We want to make certain that we're doing what we can here to make certain that Monroe is a place where everybody feels at home, everybody feels they belong. We want to make certain that, that the work that you're doing is planning commission, you're, you're looking at things to, to make certain that we can fill all of those needs for housing affordability. Affordability for people to start businesses here and so on and so forth. And I really value the work that you're doing. So that's all I have this evening. Again, different presentation slightly than I gave the chamber. Chair, I do, I, as I said before, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not. I'm fine with that too.
Thanks Mayor Thomas. Jake.
Sorry to go back to the second or third slide, but can you speak on the therapeutic courts? I haven't heard of that.
Yeah. Yeah. So we have a therapeutic court here. And that also goes by the title, community court. So apparently therapeutic court is a broader term for a community court. The way things work here is that if you are and I, I'm not the prosecuting attorney or public defender or the judge. So with all that said, I'm, I'm sharing what I generally broadly understand here. If you're arrested for drug possession or drug use, you come before the judge. The judge will allow the public defender and the prosecuting attorney, who is somebody that we pay for, not the county prosecuting attorney, to work with you to come to develop a voluntary agreement. Where you can go into treatment in lieu of going to jail. And so what happens is if it is a misdemeanor, that's up to ninety days that you could spend in jail, or if it's a gross misdemeanor, that's up to three hundred and sixty-four days. And if you go through a, a treatment process and you are successful, then that can defer potential jail time. And so the therapeutic court involves working with those partners I was telling you about before, the human services provider. So I don't want to name them because I'm going to forget somebody and I don't want to forget anybody. But we have a whole bunch of different human service providers that will make contact with whomever it is that has voluntarily decided to go into this program in lieu of, of jail time. And the goal here is to is to, rather than continuing to contact somebody, because what happens otherwise is this person gets arrested. They go to jail, just like, just like anybody else. They make bond or whatever the case is, they're released and then they, they end up living, just like I would go back home if I were arrested. They end up living where they do, which may be in our parks or something like that. There's no way for them to get medical assistance to you know, to, to manage through chemical dependency, mental behavioral health, because they don't have health insurance like many of us probably do through our employers. And so by having this treatment process and having funding for it, because we have funding for it as well. We're able to help people out of that, which, out of that situation, which means that we're not contacting them with P D again. Right? So the idea here is rather than continuing to have somebody go through this, this cycle of incarceration and not getting better. We give somebody the option to get better and we work with them to get better. We've had, I think, three people who have graduated from the program. Just like getting permits out the door, it takes a while to start these programs. So I think these programs started about, this program started about eight months ago. And so we're now just beginning to see those people that entered into the program, the couple of months after it got started. And I think we've had three people graduate from the program so far. So that's what a therapeutic court is. It's wraparound services to help somebody now. Because of the way things are set up in the state, it has to be voluntary. If they decide that they don't want to do it, then our only option then is, is potential incarceration and, you know, going that path. So that's, that's what the therapeutic court is. And because we have a municipal court here, we're able to offer those services that may or may not be available at a district court, which is county-run facility.
Amazing.
Now you know, at least what I think is the rest of the story.
That's excellent. I was going to ask, is the rehabilitation service, is that something that we're able to offer through the grant? Or is that something that the state sponsors, the actual rehabilitation?
Yeah.
And don't worry if you don't know, that's a finer.
I don't know. So it's, it's complicated. I know that we sponsor through art dollars and through grants recovery beds here in Monroe. So we work with the, the hospital and we will sponsor recovery beds. We also have work that we're doing with the McKinney Vento families and McKinney Vento is an act, you know, like an ordinance law. It's an act. And we have, I think about four hundred thousand dollars that we put into that program. Those are people that, who have kids that attend Monroe School District, but are living unhoused. And because of that, they may be in Everett, but their kids are in Monroe School District. So they may be in Everett today. They might be in Linwood tomorrow. They might be in Snohomish the day after. They might be in Monroe the day after that. The idea here is that by us having a program where we try to get them housing here, the kids can stay in school here, which provides for better stability. And our goal there, again, each one of these has a different goal. One is the, the first example, the therapeutic court is that one person today to stop the cycle. The hopefully stop the cycle. The recovery beds, it would be the same thing, but the McKinney Vento is, we're talking about intergenerational. You have kids who are raised, living unhoused, you know, out of a car or in a tent or something. We, we want to, we want to, we want to approach those families and find a way to help their parents and help the kids at the same time. So that hopefully those kids don't find themselves in a situation where that's the life that they know, right? And that provides stability too, because they get to stay in the Monroe School District. Rather than, you know, they're in Everett tomorrow. So where are they going to go to school, right? How are they going to get here? So we've had, I think we've been successful with three or four families so far. And that was back in January or February. I'm sure it's more now. But yeah, we're, we're doing a lot of work in this space to try to help people. And, and, and that's a, that's a really good thing. That's a real blessing, you know?
Amazing. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Other questions? Okay. Sounds good. I was just checking for Brandy. Hi, Brandy. All right. Cool. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay. Next item, we have introduction to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, School Mitigation Fees Code Amendment. And we have Amy here tonight. Great to see you, Amy.
Good evening for everyone, for anyone who doesn't know who I am. I haven't been here in a while. I'm Amy Bright. I'm a planner here at the city. Tonight I am introducing the, some comp, Comprehensive Plan Amendment and School Mitigation Fee Code Amendment. So if you, if you don't know, the city of Monroe has two school districts located within its boundaries. We have a very small portion of the Snohomish School District up in the upper northwest corner of the city. And then the majority of it is covered by Monroe School District. And every two years, those school districts adopt their own comp plan, just like we do. And the city of Monroe, every two years will adopt by reference their comprehensive plan. And we will then collect impact fees on their behalf. And so that's for each of our single family and multifamily permits that come in. And every two years, they update those amounts, the impact fee amounts. And we are just a pass-through agency. We, we just take that. The, the money comes in from the developer and we pass it over to the school district. So both school districts have updated their comprehensive plan and we are here introducing a comp plan amendment and the next steps that we'll have for this is a public hearing at the next planning commission meeting on May twenty second. For you to provide a recommendation to city council. And then after that, the city council will consider adoption of the plan. Does anyone have any questions?
Jake, sorry if this is a nerdy question, but does each district set their own impact fee? Is that what you said?
They do. They're different.
Okay.
Depending on the, the capital facilities plan, what they've identified, what they'll need to build.
Gotcha. Cool. Thank you. And so just go ahead, Kate.
I was just gonna say, in your packet, Amy provided the complete capital facility plan for both, both school districts. We, we received information in time. We just missed the budget cycle, which is typically when we adopt the capital facilities plan. This is of great importance to us right now because the Monroe School District actually decreased their impact fees. And I think that's on page
I, I know the amounts, the previous and the current amounts, if any, but yeah.
Yeah. And so we are issuing a lot of building permits right now, so we'd like to get this fixed sooner than later. We are supposed to do our process concurrently with Snohomish County and, and the goal was that this, the county and then all of the cities are updating all school impact fees together. And that, so the process started last year and the county instituted their new fees on January first. So a little bit behind, but not a big deal. And that's why we're here this evening.
Okay. And we're two weeks away from the, the public.
Hearing, correct. That planning commission.
And so just describe to us what our responsibility as planning commission is. You know, we've seen Snohomish School Districts outlined, we've seen Monroe School Districts, we know the amounts. What, what would you like from planning commission?
Well, the city of Monroe does have an interlocal agreement with with the Monroe School District that we will adopt their capital facilities plan each year. We do not have such an interlocal agreement yet with Snohomish School District. They're a little bit newer to the city. But that will likely happen or probably request that in the future with them. And that interlocal agreement is that we will adopt their capital facilities plan. They went, just like we do with our comprehensive plan, they went through strategic planning and all of these things and to adopt that plan. So we're not making changes to their plan. It's already been adopted. We are just adopting it by reference into our comprehensive plan that we will collect impact fees in the amount that they identified and pass that to the developer to pay.
Okay.
So this, as you say, the straightforward answer is this one is even and you are following process. That's basically what this is. The school district has already done their due diligence. And we, by interlocal agreement, go through and update art comp plan, which has not been done since two, twenty twenty, which instituted the new impact fees in twenty, I'm sorry, twenty nineteen for twenty twenty. So it's, it is a formality. It is a process. If you want to change things in the school district, you actually need to go to the school district meetings when they're talking about what they feel is appropriate. And it's an iterative process, like we're in the comp plan right now. We need to tell the school district, hey, we're expecting to accommodate this population. We are expecting housing in these areas. And so they take some of that information into consideration when they're updating their plans.
And Becky was here earlier in the year, described how the city collects the mitigation fees, holds them and remits to the school districts.
That's correct.
Move expedition with expeditiously, basically.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for Amy?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Amy. Great to see you.
I just want to give her huge kudos. I asked her to do this last week. So she's super planner right now and I really appreciate her hard work. So thank you and acknowledge her.
That's automatic now. That's kind of cool. It didn't even have a green period. Sorry. Um, I was just going to say that I actually sat through the, the comp plan presentations and stuff with the school district. It's interesting, there, it's really strict on what those impact fees can go towards. And actually, if they don't spend them in a certain capacity, within a certain amount of time, they go back, I believe, right? Yeah. It's like six years. So.
Okay. See you in a couple of weeks, Amy.
Now we're going to just do like a five-minute recess. We're going to bring you down here to do the exercise. So give us like five minutes to rearrange the room. And, and again, I apologize. We had really hoped to do this exercise when you guys were at the open house. It was just a miscommunication. So. Going to do it now. So sorry, no more noting. I, I heard before, I, I talked to Lance about that. I was concerned that when I heard how much had come, that there was too much. He's a rather have too much than not enough, running out within that.
Hey, um, will I be able to participate online or for this next exercise?
You're able to, if we can figure out how to get you to see the map, you can participate.
Okay, we'll just give it a try, right? I'll see how it goes.
I was gonna say, Brandy, the other thing is this exercise is online. It's the, the survey that if you go to the Monroe twenty forty-four. It is live. It's been live for a couple of weeks. This is the hands-on version of that survey.
And we can definitely get comments, Brandy. I just don't know how well you're able to see the map.
Right.
We got a roving camera. Harry's replacement.
All right. Thank you.
Drew. Thanks Drew. He, he's, he's working the camera so he can see the. I, I assume you turned off the recording, Hannah.
Excited for this, uh, spell of sunshine final.
I bet. Get out there with, keep the sunscreen lathered up on the youngster.
But like if you cover him and it's not, he's going to be hot. So thankfully we just, we just got M C, so we'll probably be hanging out inside as much as possible when it's getting that hot. I don't know.
Who'd you go with? Did you go with Genesis for A C or? Those lifetime guys.
Those lifetime guys, they run their quotes so efficiently. It's like a eight page, you know, they'll visit, it's like the afternoon, you've got a new page summary of what you can do. Well, I got a new furnace, but I, but Genesis had the equipment that I wanted. Genesis, but I had like time coming, they're just still, but they, they roll like a real.
Cause we saw this hotel come in with the baby.
Melanie, were you at the Mariners game yesterday? I saw you on the big screens.
If you want to be on these three sides or Jason.
I can go wherever.
Brandy, can you see the map?
Yes, I can see it pretty well.
This might stop, might clear, then she.
Are we back on the recording here? Yeah, okay. Um, for those of you that don't know me, I haven't been here in a while, um, I'm Leanne, associate planner here. And so today, we're gonna go ahead and run through a game, the same game we played at the open house. Um, so basically our goal is to use these pieces here to fill in housing needs and job needs throughout the city. So our consultants have gone through and given us the totals that we need to hit with the comprehensive plan, they're over here. And each of these pieces represent a certain amount of either houses or jobs. And you can see some of the pieces are smaller, some of them are bigger and think monopoly, each color is a different type of property. So all these like more yellowy ones are different types of more secret type of property. So we have detached housing on larger lots, like your traditional single family home. We have the smaller lots that would be something more, until you'd see more in town. And then the places in town homes and cool things over here, there's example pictures of kind of what each type of development is. Um, all the purplish ones are mixed use, so you'll have some housing, um, and businesses in the same structure. And then you've got the brown, there are different type of more traditional apartment buildings, no mixed use with them. And then for jobs, we have commercial, which is the pinkish red. And then we have industrial, which is gray. And then again, the mixed use will also provide jobs. So basically our goal here today is everybody gather around, we're gonna take these pieces and you're gonna put them around town where you think we need to have that type of development. Um, incorporated into our comprehensive plan.
And then they're gonna do it, right?
Policy to do it, exactly. Yeah. Yes. So, um, what we did at the open house is we broke into groups, each person had like, I don't know, around ten people or so in a group. We had several tables, probably, I think we had eight tables or so. Um, and then every, every group went through, we hit the numbers and then each group actually gave a report out, like this citizen stood up on a microphone and reported out with their group. And that actually went really, really well. And they talked about different topics that came up. Um, as we're doing this, we can kind of have different conversations about, hey, I'm noticing there's a lot of housing up here, not a lot of transit, how are we gonna keep getting people down? Or, you know, there's some traffic up here, or hey, all the jobs are over here, housing's over here, how can we maybe address that? So as we're putting out the pieces, we can also have those discussions. And so we'll go ahead and get started and we can get a decent amount of pieces on the board, we go, we'll add it up and we'll see what we're at. And then we can kind of adjust, if we're like, oh gosh, we have a ton of houses and no jobs, we'll move the pieces around, see if we can get right about on our targets. So come on in, pick some pieces. Um, at the open house, I said the first piece out, but that was just to get people rolling, you guys are a little more familiar with the city, so I'm gonna let you guys dive right on in. And we can have more of each of those pieces, or you just put three of each to get us started.
And I think, um, just some additional ground rules, um, no development can occur along the shoreline, that's out of bounds. Other than that, have fun.
Yeah, luckily, most of ours is parks, so. Well, if we don't want to develop those, but come on in, um, this is meant to be interactive. If you need help with the pieces or you're, or any direction, let me know. Oh, um, black is our current state limits, red is our UGA. So you can come out into the UGA with your pieces, uh, but not outside of that.
So actually, and this is new for some of our planning commissioners, so the UGA is called the urban growth area. And so we identify areas that the city is supposed to grow into, we should be annexing them to meet our housing or job, um, uh, allocations. Um, if you go beyond that though, that's a whole additional legislative process to the county.
Yeah. And then the, the current zoning is the colors, um, you can try to stick into it, or this is our opportunity to mix it up, so go for it.
I'm so impressed that so many strangers work together at that community event, yeah.
You can, because this is our chance to change what, what's allowed, so.
That's a really good question. I would write it on there.
With mixed use, that two thousand plus print, was it not a big important?
From Monroe, that would have been very, um, progressive, I guess. The other thing you should probably know, the pride of the world actually started as a way, it was an industrial market, I mean, all works. Yeah, when it was being converted, there were new original plans, we have them somewhere, so you call it was gonna be a gold port, it was residential. People from Montelteo and the story goes.
You know the latest on the first errors? Is that court case happened?
Uh, so, no, no, I believe. Out of the appeal period, I have not heard if they, um, you know. Well, the appeal thing has been straightened, coming. Found the city was frankly, or. So now we're in the.
Changed that.
No, so it was an interpretation, the way the code is written today is. And, um, the property owner, so the PUD provided some information when we were doing a pre-application and the heat opening work.
Yeah, that's another UGA, just not as an app object. So the large housing for businesses represents three hundred and eighty meters of space.
Yeah, and. Yeah, so they are the as a border interpretation of the code, because we allow more and more.
The commas matter in the periods and.
Uh, but again, they still are, I can't remember if they got, I think the appeal period of court required, but they, they still haven't had any. Disagreed. That could be a way to get more of that feel, that.
There's just so much to do, I don't wanna.
So that is.
I believe arguments going on tables too at the community, not arguments, but discourse at the community event.
Quite full of critical. Talk about East Monroe, yes, yes. That area, that's a very long, yes, it's best.
So we have a lot happening up on the north side of highway two, what about anything on the south side of highway two here?
Speak to something really quick. East Monroe, I think the problem with it was the idea of how much traffic it would put on US two right there. Um, detached housing on smaller lots, something to think about, throw that out there. I would love to.
And like I said, we do have more.
Yes.
Correct, yeah, that's for jobs, the commercial and the industrial are for adding jobs, not housing, so. So we are, you're doing a pretty good job of your housing, but we don't. Yeah, no, you can definitely keep going.
That's what I was stuck in. I want, I wanted them to sign some excuse all along. Cause that's how. A little. So, yeah, thinking about the, the history of Thai City and how they were like two different commercial areas, I always like, dang, I wish we had a store down here or something.
Like your shirt balls, that's more of a new commercial.
I don't know how to look at things though, when it comes to. Destruction of existence. My brain, I just can't picture like, yeah, well. Hey, did you see, help with the, you were in the, the planning area in Woodville when they're. That is beautiful.
Yeah, but. So this city is gonna continue to evolve.
Yeah, that's a great, I mean, I just went there and had breakfast the other day and I was like, we're such a small piece of.
So let's keep going with our pieces, cause overall, I think we're gonna need more pieces to get our targets. And we do have several that are, like, we have some commercial where there's already commercial and there's some like industrial where there's already industrial, so what is our top problem? Wanting to add one more. What's already there? Any, any ideas?
Could say some other things too, what if the department of construction feels what? Do you have ideas on how you see that?
I mean, yes, but I don't wanna count that for the.
Is that a, is that a thing? Is that a possibility?
Well.
You remind a job, right?
So this is.
That's, oh, sorry.
I, I like to get very much a detailed person, like, well, what about this, what about this, this is also our chance to dream, right? So if, if you wanna do it, now's the time. Dive in there, Jake.
I wanna know where the old, um, school district.
Attendance out of a job, yeah.
They're not.
Where is that?
They're not.
Where the, the school districts administration. Were they, isn't that right next to where? How many, um, employees are there at the directional compass? I don't have any ideas.
I'm not sure, but there's a lot.
I can answer that.
I put out, you have to accommodate more jobs.
There's, there's about fifteen hundred employees there right now.
Fifteen hundred, thank you.
I didn't realize that that's city, that's city, uh, land, it's not county, like the fairgrounds in state. And we can go on over state land.
I kind of, I kind of disagree. With, cause there's a lot of apartments like in town.
Let's talk about the.
And so like.
That changed, the zoning changed for all of this in two thousand fifteen, when you adopted.
Has nothing going on, there's a track. I think that there's.
Cause I live on a hundred.
To be. This is very zoning for residential and general industry. And in twenty fifteen, the community said, no.
Columbus, there's like a track field that has nothing on it at all.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Looking at different.
I think that.
So Janelle, I was just looking for a piece of property, put it anywhere you want it. I just want more affordable.
Yeah.
Multifamily, so.
Here's where I, and I know that like out of Chain Lake is like, um, that's not Monroe. But being so involved in this school district, I feel like the boundaries that they have are very, um, like segregational to a point, and I feel like this particular group of people go to Chain Lake. And this particular group of people go to Salem Woods and all the people that live in apartments and all, they all go to Frank Whack. And I just feel it should be more distributed.
And that's.
But.
Okay.
So I was like, let's put some apartments out by like, you know, like whether or not, right? Because it gives people that opportunity to not be constricted because they can't afford to buy a house. You know, or they might, you know, they might need to be on like low income, it gives them that opportunity to like, you know? And so, but I mean.
The, the one thing I was thinking about though, is I'd love that the kid could, the whole family could walk to school together. I on one of the parents to stay home until the bus comes.
Well, and if there's no yard, where all the parks are too, um, so like.
People who live in apartments are too, and they do, I mean, some apartment buildings have playgrounds.
That's true, that's true.
Um, a lot of the newer ones do. Just nine years, there's not really any newer.
The larger, the mix of business with the animal homes.
Randy, did you have a comment?
Probably Jake is.
Yes, um, so mine is like taking off of what Janelle was just saying, um, about wanting to have more distribution of all things in all the different areas. Right now, we're very much like, here's the shopping district, here's the housing district, here's the industrial district. And in healthy vibrant cities, those things are mixed together more. So you have a park within walking distance, you have apartments mixed in with large houses, cottage style houses, additional dwelling unit. Um, allowances, small retail grocery stores, I mean, Park Place Store, um, Storm Lake Grocery.
Allowances, small retail grocery stores, I mean Park Place Store, um, Storm Lake Grocer. Roosevelt Stores went out of business and turned into a marijuana shop, but those kind of things, there can be, there can be corner stores. In these areas that are have housing developments and then like you were just talking about, about being able to walk to school, you can also walk to a store. Um, even if you live outside of town, not only just town people get that experience. Um. So I have some other like more specific areas of where to put certain things, but in general, that's. That's a lot of what I heard people saying, uh, the meetings and it's something that I agree with is spreading everything out more instead of segregating it.
What does it take?
Well, the bus goes here, cause I used to write it. The bus goes to, the bus goes on Main, the bus goes down that one street that. Like Blueberry, not Blueberry, but where the train tracks were getting this.
No, that's North Kelsey or.
Goes down Kelsey. Like it does a loop. Like, I mean.
It comes down one fifty.
Anything goes down a street in Friday, on Friday, like into Friday.
Yeah.
You know, there's.
Snakes all over.
There are like, you know, quite a few stops and stuff, but I mean.
All the same buses at all. It's.
It's all community transit. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So. You're probably not going to see transit there. I, I'm being honest with you. I spent fourteen years with community transit. They are looking at alternative modes of transportation, which I really wish would be a pilot, cause we have an interesting topography. We have one lane in, one lane out, two five twenty-two. Right now the city has three twelve bus routes to local. That are basically an hour, half hour hourly service and then you've got one commuter that goes down to Seattle. So the stuff that they're looking at, um, in Linwood, uh, they're trying to be in Arlington, like Stevens and. So there might be some creative ways for. Yeah, right.
I have seen a lot of those community transit cars.
Does it, does it program?
Guys.
Yeah.
So I assume by the same principle logic, we can, um.
Yeah. Um, okay, so I did, I added.
The state's land.
US two bypass.
Yeah, bypass. We can zone onto the bypass. That lakeside land.
The job. Mix of businesses.
Oh, industry.
There's a lot of land that there's.
So we need to, and then here's.
Where that big mountain is. The dump? That's what that.
Okay.
I wonder.
Hey, Brandy, are there, um, specific things that you'd like us to, to put down? Like a mixed use or high, um, high intensity housing in any particular part of the community?
Yes, um, so all over, um, you know, the style of, uh, buildings where the. Like the village in Totem Lake where it's like the grocery store on the bottom and housing on top or a tower of housing, a tower of apartments. That style, um, incorporated into the area at Coastal. Fred Meyer. Safeway.
So you're talking, I just wanna make sure it's the mixed use where you've got a lot of residential up top?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Um, so all basically everything on the, the left side of highway two is at the north side. And then there's one targeted area, um. So it's the Wolfkill, um, currently it's Wolfkill property where they have, um, like. Behind Grocery Outlet there. So Grocery Outlet and Wolfkill would be another targeted area that I would say that same style of housing where. It's a mix of retail and high intensity apartments.
Don't we have anymore?
Yeah, so we are way over on our housing. We need to move some of our currents or swap out different types. So.
I would also like to see, um, changing the zoning for on Main Street that all, everything that's second story, um, be housing instead of. The retail office spaces.
So all of Main Street, get rid of the, um, office designation and make it all residential.
Right, cause that's. You gotta have the people where the businesses are and that's one of the major things down there is continually not having. People that live, uh, above those businesses. And then, let's see. Lining out our areas for parks, um, because we can keep going up with apartments and. Um, second story buildings and stuff, but we can't get back land that we have, um. Designated as housing when we could have, uh, left it as a park. So I think one area by Lowe's should stay a large park.
We don't have. I think we do not have the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but we don't write it down.
Okay.
So I wanna make sure you set a park by Lowe's.
Yeah, like larger than the one that is currently proposed.
Okay, so.
Sticking with that original plan from nineteen ninety where they had said they wanted a gathering space for a thousand people. Something large like that. And behind the movie theater where there's currently a unsanctioned bike park and walking path. I say we designate that also as a sanctioned park, uh, bike park and walking trail.
Which also gets to, um, Jake was talking about reinvigorate the whole US two bypass. It never comes to fruition. What other uses could it be? So we added a lot of pieces. I'm not seeing, do we add jobs?
We did, we wasn't dogs around here.
Okay.
I put it that's real.
Wait, there's, um, I'm applying for one right there.
That was redeveloped, if that was redeveloped to industrial, we'd be, we'd have hundreds of jobs.
Who added that and how do we feel like that's a, that's something we wanna keep there?
Isn't it that we have a lot of industrial, but we just maybe need to like. Have it marketed better or something? Cause I mean, the industrial park isn't full.
I'm sorry guys, can you be quiet for a second? Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I mean, the industrial park is not currently full and so, and it's also not all the way built out. Um, you know, some of our zoning, like I know for a while, um. Marijuana distributing, like processing plants wanted to open it down in the industrial park and we said no. So the council, you know, there's ordinance against that. So maybe there's other businesses that would come into the industrial park. Um, and make that continually be as robust as it could be. And that was where we could already add jobs without having to. Zone, zone anymore land for industrial.
So Brandy, the, the city did do an industrial lands survey study. Who told you that the, um, there's plenty of space, uh, available for?
I mean, I, I drive down there. I see vacant lots and I see vacant bu- businesses down there.
I saw it studied too. Said we're at a shortage, right?
And like how the, the churches are zoned down there, so they take up some of the very large spaces. I mean. It's supposed to be a robust industrial park.
But don't we already have those as a place? But they can't be in effect until that business.
Is all infrastructure marked, meaning if it's blank right here, obviously we know there's probably nothing right there, but. If it's blank, you can assume there's no roads.
Athletic places, they should be.
How close are any like businesses here? There's enough, no businesses in this at all, right? We have to go here, you have to go. All of this is kind of residential until we get here, right?
Are we gonna continue the mixed use and connect it?
On one seventy-nine?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking?
Wouldn't it be nice though? You got business all over different parts of town. It's kind of weird.
Business away from other places too and traffic. But there is no like anything businesses.
Yeah, because you're only, you've only got the, um.
That's what I'm. Footnotes.
Yeah, you are pushed here.
Me too. Why does the distance from here to here feel so long?
I do feel like you just get stuck in here.
I was gonna say you have major barriers. Five twenty-two, the only way to cross is at Main Street and one fifty-fourth, so.
That's the other tricky thing, Brandy.
Yeah.
If you put residential where Wolfkill is, they're right on the tracks.
Morning round made it work.
Yeah, just as close as the, um, as the, what's that, Lord's Lake or, um, the one by Denny's there?
Morning, yeah, in Charlotte, it's a.
I just wanna see us use the space that we already have developed. Like more in trend with what people are looking for these days, which is being able to walk to. Everywhere they wanna go.
So work on the bike pad connections throughout the community.
Right, and then just allowing housing in these areas that we already, you know, everyone complains about traffic. Well, it's because you have to drive everywhere in Monroe. And you know, when you have, when you have housing near where you wanna go, then you can walk there instead of. Requiring, we require people to drive the way that we've set up. The housing developments are all on the outside of town. And you can see more people that live in, you know, the downtown can walk to Fred Meyer and Safeway and, and stuff, uh, not Safeway so much. The more of the Fred Meyer area and Walmart, I guess, but, um. Yeah, I just wanna see us get more mixed use everywhere instead of. Separating the uses.
So much of this is just parking lot. It's just parking lot all right here.
We went up five hundred using units of housing, so we are now a thousand units over our housing that we need, so. We need to reel that housing back, um, and we did go over the employment as well. We're now about four hundred overall employment, so we did raise that up, so yay, it worked. But our housing is, is hot.
So, but this is the same problem we had when we went through the whole exercise. You know, buildable lands report is, we hit our number, but none of the housing units that we were building were affordable. So that's, so you're giving us the number that we're way high in housing, but. We're not, there's no differentiation between middle housing or.
That's a great point.
Affordable housing or achievable housing or whatever. Right? So.
Well, what makes housing affordable generally is the size, right? So.
Size of the lot.
Yeah, or the size of the house.
Well, yeah, but the more units you can put on any type of, uh, buildable lot. The, the less, the, the cost of the lot is a primary, so you're right. If it's eight hundred square foot and all, you know. Cheaper than, you know.
Right, and that whole, the, there's a difference between just apartments and then just developments. So there's that cottage style housing or like. Instead of a fourplex where it's all connected, you have four small houses on the one, on the one lot where we would allow someone to do a connected fourplex.
So I'm just throwing this out for you guys, um, an idea that, um, has been discussed currently is an idea of. We have a lot of, um, maybe considered area that's not heightened or, yeah, high density residential, make that more moderate. That's, that is one idea concept. Although we don't have a whole lot, I mean, the. Somebody threw out this idea that I can't remember which part of the community, but then. Well, it's trying to protect especially the historic columns, so. Maybe that becomes, oh, I don't know.
Uh, we finance, um, properties in Everett.
Okay.
They're multi. But they're historic. Turn the century, the last century.
I mean, we can leave it here. We don't have to get into the goal, just know that we're over eight hours, but it's just.
I believe they do.
That's a question.
A lot of parents.
We are still about. Like seven hundred units over on housing, um, if you.
So the, the trend, the trend is to go away from single family, right?
You decide.
You decide. That does seem to be what the general.
So if we're. So if we're throwing down. Puzzle pieces for single family housing and that the trend is less or no single family zoning in the future. Right? We should consider, I think Brandy mentioned you'd like to see a fourplex there instead of a single family house.
No, or like four small cottage houses instead of, not everybody wants to live in an apartment. Some people do wanna be a homeowner. And if we can make small cottage style homes that are detached from each other. That is, and the single family question that you're bringing up, eventually it is probably going to be all zoning is not going to allow it, so. Um, if we can use this last time that we're allowed to have single family and do it smart and, uh, get people into smaller, more affordable homes.
Cottage houses, that, that's a great suggestion.
Cottage housing will be the bright yellow.
But where was she saying?
Did you have a spot, Brandy? I have one up in the, in my studio.
I think it should get mixed in with anywhere that we normally allow single family homes. Um, I think if they should be mixed in because you get different, um. Different people that want to have a very large house and right now when we, when we just do the zoning where the, the lot sizes and the houses are all the same, you get like. The same groups of people, whereas if you mix up the sizes of the houses. So I'm guess I'm saying wherever single family is allowed, um, and then also, um. Some, some bare areas that could use, uh. Could use some more housing. I can't really identify where that would be, um, not tear down something to put those in, but somewhere that we could infill.
Yeah.
Also anywhere we would allow multifamily, I guess, if we were gonna allow fourplex, we should allow the four detached cottage homes.
Economically though. I just don't know how it gets built.
But see, the thing is people are only buying what they're, they're being built. And so if, if we put, we know people want these. And the developers are just making the, uh, the choice to do what they've always been doing because they've been selling, but. Um, people don't get to buy whatever they want because builders don't build this stuff right now. And we let them figure that out. I mean, and you know.
I was at a, a conference the other day that was bigger, the biggest home builders in Washington. It was interesting. They were saying that. Any parcel they can find, they would put a single family housing unit on. Multifamily is really tough. Take that call in the pencil. Buy it on its own. Um, so like Jay is saying, I don't think that they would be willing just because of the free market to buy a parcel like that and put cottages. Just because of the turnover. I don't know if it's, it's worth the cost or especially when you consider the investment that they could turn from.
Well, hey, we're here to represent the people who are telling us what they want and that's what we've been hearing a lot of. That's all over the trends is people want these small cottage houses, both older adults and young single people. And we're not here to care about whether or not the developers are gonna make it work, so.
I mean, it's just, can you, could you put in some kind of zoning in the city to say this is the kind of home, I thought it was just density?
No, I mean, you can zone areas that are very specific. The, the big question that I have is the. Well, a developer that's willing to do it. Cause we could zone, you know, you can zone anything.
Exactly.
A particular way, but if the market does not support a developer to come in and. Develop as your code allows.
So we really should talk to. So we really should talk to Hanson Holmes.
Oh, yeah, the part of this project will be reaching out to the development community.
Cause he's built.
Yes.
What, what street is that?
We also have to think, though, that just whatever's, whatever's working for them right now, the, like, the village model, you know, if that zoned, they tried to get that zoned in earlier, but they didn't think people would go for it, and now that's like a shining star, so if, if it's not something that is viable now, that doesn't mean that it's not going to be viable in the future.
About Totem Lake, can you say the village?
Did you ask me something? I couldn't hear you.
I said, are you talking about Totem Lake when you say the village?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's the third iteration of what was planned there.
Really?
Yeah, I think, I think, didn't Deborah kind of touch on that, just about North Kelsey, yeah. The final numbers, we ended up still about five hundred housing units over what we needed, and, but only about two hundred jobs over what we needed, so, not bad.
I would like to question this mix of businesses and homes up here, just because the businesses will be so isolated. That's, I don't know, that's just my question when you think about it. It, I don't know.
And we, we can, we can move on for tonight, this is a great exercise, thank you all for participating.
What were some of the out of the box things that people did?
Oh, let's see, I can talk about my group and specifically, I remember more about that one, they had a lot more activity over here, they were really hoping to get.
And that's the entrance of Monroe, and then it's, it's just like RVs.
To see a car dealership, um, we had some different things over, like in the coastal area, there was some mixes of housing and industrial actually, and then we actually had a, like a what's up here, they actually put kind of like a center, they actually made it, um, institutional, um, tile, so that they could add up by some different types of housing, hoping to make like another core that was in my groups and things that were creative that came up, um, there was a lot of interest around the, um, airport and downtown. It came up a lot. We have, uh, videos of each of the callouts, and so we'll figure out a way to get it to the commissioners, but there were some very, uh, notable themes, the idea of mixed use zoning with residential above commercial was very popular in the North Kelsey and along US two. Uh, the airport was also discussed many times, uh, for commercial, residential, um, it's like three or four of the tables have the same comments, um. And our consultants are gonna get us a, yeah, um, and so they're working on that. Soon, yeah, um, based on, at least pictures of everyone's game, just like we did, and videos, they're gonna get it for them. So if you guys wanna go take a seat, we will continue on our meeting. Actually, I can sell the other side of it. All right. Uh, so next steps on the call plan, um, mentioning, the consultants are gonna summarize, uh, everything that we heard at the open house. There's the online survey that is a virtual edition of what you have done tonight. That is still open and will be open through next week, I believe. Um, I have been working with a school district, we're gonna try to come to a government or civics class at the high school, um, I've gotten through two hurdles, got just need a teacher to reach out now, we've been working with Mariana, I apologize, forget her last name, but we really were disappointed that we didn't have a lot of our, um, Latino community come to the open house, so we're trying to figure out how we can go to them and do the same exercise. And then after all that is done, all the information that has been provided, that will help with the next step, which is starting to um, look at different land use scenarios, which I think our consultant mentioned a little bit. Taking this information and seeing how you can revisualize, um, the city of Monroe. And then after that, we start working on different chapters, look at zoning code, so really appreciate your input this evening.
Can I comment or ask a question? Um, have, in terms of reaching out to our, um, Latinx community, has anybody with the city reached out to the church that's a large portion of the community attends?
Saint Mary of the Valley, um, we are having conversations, um, we're having internal conversations, there's some, uh, there's some concern about going to the church, but that's where our community is, so I, I hope we get there.
Yeah, and, and even if it's not to have the activity like at the church, it just might be a good way to reach out to let them know that something's going on and to maybe more personalize the invites and.
Okay. Yeah, and, um, also at Mariana's suggestion, it did go out in Peach Jar, so for all of you who have children in the school district, you should have gotten a flyer, that's for the, the online survey.
And Peach Jar is great, this is just a, as a parent, there is so many different platforms that stuff comes home to parents on, that I wouldn't count on all parents necessarily seeing that every time, so there's just a lot, there's like Parent Map, there, there's just a lot.
Appreciate that. We can move on. We're gonna. Hi, everyone. Okay, so we'll do the usual, we'll go from the top down. Um, so we had five pre-application meetings in the month of March. Um, two of those were related to the city hall renovation, one of them was a conditional use permit for our temporary city hall over there by the hospital in the medical building just next door, and the other is for the actual city hall renovation. Um, otherwise, uh, another pre-application was for a new shop for Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue, just over here behind us. And then, um, two separate pre-apps for boundary line adjustments or potential short plats.
Hannah, you have, oh, where, where are we? Oh, when you get to the next page. Second page.
Yeah.
Go over, there was a public meeting. Right?
Oh, that has not been held quite yet.
Okay, for Saint Vincent de Paul?
Yeah, can we get to that in just a second?
Sorry.
No worries. You're excited, I like it. Um, so for, uh, project review, like I mentioned, we did have those two pre-application meetings related to the conditional use permit, and, um, we also have site plan review in for the renovations on the city hall. Leanne has been awesome and very helpful with both of those, so a big round of applause to her, for all of that. Um, another big round of applause to Leanne for record roundup days for our project highlight. This has been in the works for a long time, in an effort to organize and reduce a lot of our paper hard copies of records before we have the city hall renovations, um, we've been going through as all city staff and, um, doing record roundup days, so you can see, um, in these before and after pictures. Um, this is the planning area, we cleared out, Leanne, how many file cabinets?
Six.
We've, we've, we've emptied out like five or six file cabinets, um, and we've gotten a lot of our land use files indexed and scanned in, and, yeah.
Scan everything.
Yep. Yep. Yep, and whatever is already, um, met or exceeded its required retention, we've been able to get rid of. All right. Oh, the nineteen sixty-four Gukomish Comprehensive Plan for our area done by Snohomish County, and that's being digitized. I was gonna say, one of the big benefits of this project is we will be able, a lot of our files historically have been paper, and so if somebody comes in on asking about a particular parcel, we may have information, but we don't know about it, now everything will be, uh, by address, and so we should be able to help residents a little bit better, as well as ourselves, when we're doing research on a project. And I think probably my favorite thing that we have and is now scanned is the original blueprint for the Frank Wagner Auditorium from nineteen thirty-six.
Oh, yeah.
And they're actually blue, it's very.
Is that a test school now?
Oh. We don't have like a public facing portal, but we do have it scanned, so yes, you could, you could see that, and we are keeping those, the paper copy, we only kept about two sets of plans, one from the thirties and one from the fifties, everything else we were able to scan and pass.
Be cool for you guys to coordinate the Monroe Historical Society, I'm sure you're excited about that.
Okay. So, current projects, um, as Jay pointed out, we only have a couple things on here that are new, um, from the February report. Uh, two accessory dwelling unit applications are currently in review, the Erickson ADU and the Grant ADU. Um, we currently have a conditional use permit for Heather's Hope in review, um, it's temporary transitional housing um, just here by the church, um, it's the former pastor's home. Yeah, and then the temporary encampment permit up at Saint Vincent de Paul. Currently in review. Do you have questions on that?
I was just. It has, um, so how involved is the planning department's city, who's gonna overcome the objections from?
So, I, I, I wanna clarify, what is being hosted later this week is they are required by state law and our code to do a community open house, and it is a Q and A of what they're proposing and to take input, it is completely separate from the city's permit process, this is a type one permit, which means it does not require, as long as it meets the code requirements, the city is gonna issue it, there's no public hearing, there's, it's not like a conditional use permit, but part of the state and the city's code is that they have to host this meeting to educate the peo- uh, community of what they're actually doing, and um, there will be an FAQ, I've been working, um, with, uh, Saint Vincent de Paul. We asked them to finish, uh, an FAQ on some of what does this actually mean, how many places are actually there, are people in a, can anybody be in this, and so I'm hoping it will be done tomorrow so we can get it online, um, on our, our website, but it, it is all Saint Vincent de Paul's materials.
Okay, so their representatives will be there to respond to questions.
No, it's at Saint Vincent de Paul, I believe. Isn't that correct? Yes, it's at their facility.
Thank you. Melanie?
Um, I know that I had sent out an email that was inquiring about some things, and, um, as I saw a lot of the discussion about it, and I think a lot of discussion was stemmed from um, just lack of information with the PD, and then also some of the wording, which I learned is um, it's my understanding that calling it a temporary encampment, a lot of that comes from the state level, correct? Not even the local level, and so when you look, and when you just say a temporary encampment, a lot of minds are already made up on what that may entail or could entail just because of the wording, so, um, it's just stuff to keep in mind, so I'm looking forward to the FAQ coming out, and hopefully people get their questions answered um, at the forum on Thursday, but, uh, I also appreciate Anita and staff, um, their willingness to respond as well to some of this, so the meeting got rescheduled because of community input, and the time got changed to later because of community input. So I do wanna say thank you, um, for the city's part in, in helping to get some of that changed around and more information that's coming to the community on that.
Randy, could you jump in?
Hi, um, since this is already posted as a meeting, um, do you, do we need to tell you how many of us are gonna be there for quorum reasons or anything?
Yes, please.
I plan on going.
If anyone else plans to, or if you're unsure, um, please email me. At least a couple of days ahead of time.
It is Thursday, um, five to six PM at Saint Vincent, so if anybody is wanting to attend, I had hoped to, but I believe I have a schedule conflict now, and that's okay. Cause my questions, I think, have been answered, and I know Will, so.
So, email Hannah, if you don't know tonight, email Hannah separately, don't respond to all or anything, just.
Yes, please.
So, do I understand correctly that this hearing, or it's more of just a FAQ or Q and A session, there's no decision that's gonna be changed or affected from it?
Um, the pieces of information that I'm gonna encourage you to go look at, or I can send you, is, um, it's revised code of Washington, section thirty-five A, point twenty-one, point three sixty, which talks about, they call them temporary encampments, but it has a category, there's the tiny houses, there's the safe parking, it is a collection of temporary housing, and so it sets out state requirements, our code for the most part is verbatim of state law.
Got it.
The community meeting is required in both state law and our code, and it is, um, the religious organization that is hosting this has to do an FAQ to explain what this it's, it is not a state, it's not a, it's not a city meeting, it is not a public hearing, we cannot require a public hearing, this is very specific, it's, um, spelled out in state law.
So, planning commission did spend quite a bit of time with faith-based, um, type of temporary housing like this.
But you've had to say that on the phone so many times to callers in the city hall.
I think Lance has been taking a lot of the questions and Anita, so it, it's a lot of education, because a lot of decisions are not in our control. For better or for worse.
Randy, your hand is still up, did you have other input for us?
No, sorry.
Anything else?
On to page three of your report.
Right. Moving right along. If it will load for me. Oh, technology. Okay. Well, if you have it in front of you. Uh, we had nine single family building permits issued in March, and the building department conducted two hundred and five inspections. Under code enforcement, uh, forty-one cases were opened and forty-four, forty-four cases were resolved. Um, Kevin is working with local businesses regarding outreach and education on temporary signage, we're gonna be doing some um, social media posts regarding temporary signage, as we're seeing them popping up more and more, lots of stake signs, the like, so. Moving on to our last couple pages here, um, no real updates besides, um, Kate had mentioned the comprehensive plan kickoff meeting and how that went, and also the middle housing grant, um, under miscellaneous. Um, so it just gives a quick overview of the middle housing grant. Um, also wanted to point out that on June twenty-sixth, there's going to be a joint, um, Community Human Services Advisory Board and Planning Commission meeting. Um, it's on your regularly scheduled planning commission night. Um, so it's going to be discussing the outcomes from the middle housing grant work and presenting a draft, uh, middle housing code. Um, so Anita will be bringing. Um, so Anita will be bringing that to you guys.
Can I tell me that date again, if you would?
Pardon? Oh, June twenty-sixth, you'll be getting a save the date as well.
Okay.
June twenty-sixth. It's a regular Planning Commission meeting.
Understand, it's just that.
It's summer.
It's, yeah, if kids are, what's, what day do kids get out of school? Oh, we might not have everybody here, if they've got school kids and they gotta get out.
Oh, yeah.
Melanie?
Um, backing up just a little bit, I know you mentioned that there's going to be some social media posts with education on. Um, the signs and such, is, um, are there also enforcement plans on that? So I know there's still some of the same.
Yeah, so we do, um. Like. Annual temporary sign cleanups, um, so we did one around this time last year where we posted on social media. Heads up if you don't have temporary signage, which is a free permit, but here's the link to apply for it. Um, we're gonna be going through town and picking up. Unpermitted temporary signs, and. Um, here's the contact. In case your sign does get picked up. So, I'm, I'll probably be touching base with Kevin and figuring out when. The next one's going to be. So I, I just quickly add, the city of Monroe is a complaint-based code enforcement city. Uh, if you are seeing something that should not be there, Monroe listens, which is on our website, is the best way to notify the city of a, a sign.
I have heard from community members recently, so I will, I guess, speak after the meeting.
Okay.
My few more about this, yep.
Sounds good. I'll just add to that, um, since I do commute, uh, code enforcement for the planning department, which is technically signs. He is right, we are complaint-based, um, the only really exception for that is like graffiti and then temporary signs, um, that is something that we, as we see it, we will clean up or address. So, um, Kevin in particular, when he's out and about, which is pretty much every day, if he sees sign, he'll pull over, he has pamphlets, pamphlets, he hands out to business owners, always goes education first and lets them know. Um, and then if necessary, moves to enforcement, usually it's not necessary, usually the education case will do that, but that is something. That is ongoing, but we can't get every quarter of the city all the time, so if you see something, I mean, please, Monroe listens, we, that comes right into Kevin's lap, so we can address it that way. That's all I have for you.
Fantastic, if we can get through. Discussion comments by staff and commissioners before. Nine, then we don't have to extend, start with. Melanie?
Thank you to staff and the mayor, even though he is no longer here, in case he tunes in later, thank you for the presentations tonight. And for allowing us to do the fun activity, and that we've got our work cut out for us, but. Appreciate as always, and that is it for me.
You know?
I did what Melanie said, thank you.
Kelsey?
Well, nothing here, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Jake. Thanks, Jake. Brandy?
Uh, thanks for helping me through the virtual, um, doing that map stuff and for the discussion and, um, yeah, that's it.
Thanks, Brandy. I just wanted to, you know, reiterate, we really appreciate staff. The mayor, you know, let us know that you guys are the folks that make this thing work, so. Appreciate the mayor's, mayor's presentation. I know Leanne was running the shred truck too, you were running the hydraulic bin tipper, I know.
Probably the single biggest department in terms of record, so it's been a.
We, we do appreciate it.
Besides police, good call, yes.
Leanne, do you have anything for us? Okay.
I do, I actually, uh, wanted to get back to you a couple of the questions you had for me the last couple of meetings. I'm not sure I'll get it in.
No, let's, let's just extend, would you mind?
I move that we extend the meeting beyond nine PM.
Kelsey seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
Kate, sorry about that.
No, no, I wanted to make sure, so, um, I wanted to get back to you, that uh road that parallels Lake Tye. We have no agreements in place with them, it is private property, if people are on that, they are trespassing, it's not. Has nothing to do with the city.
I've chased him off.
Chased him off. Um, the second one is, um. Brandy had a question about any state laws that we're going through specific to um recreation vehicles. There was nothing that I could find, but I did want to make you. Aware, and I have not talked to our city attorney, but the information. That you might be thinking of, I'm not sure, you made some comments, is the city of Seattle, there was a court case that came out. Where a gentleman's um recreational vehicle had been impounded. Uh, the courts, and then I think he was getting fined, um, I can send you the, the links on it. Um, it went to court, the courts deemed using the Homestead Act that that was his home residence, and so. Um, we have to be cautious about how we treat recreation vehicles as a home, so. No laws uh came out this year, but there's other things that have been going on specific to the city of Seattle, so I can provide you with that information. And then, let's see, there was, oh, um, I just wanted to briefly bring you up to speed on a few things that did pass the legislature this year. Uh, we will be working on one of them with the comp plan, and that, uh, the first one is House Bill thirteen thirty-seven, I believe, and that is. Um, cities must allow up to two accessory dwelling units. If it fits within the properties, um, you cannot require the residency requirement, which the city of Monroe has um in their. Regulations, there was also another housing bill that passed, um, it does not, you know, affect the city of Monroe today, the minimum population is twenty-five. Thousand population, and that was the one about fourplexes on all residential lots. Um, do you remember, uh, Leanne was just at a conference, so, are there any ones that are coming to mind? There's money for affordable housing in there, the middle housing, and I just want to bring you back the comment about the grant. So when Anita presented the housing element to you, middle of last year, she talked a little bit about this, um. And it is also being up fronted in the work that our consultant is doing for the comp plan, and it has to do with the racial equity. Income disparity, displacement, and so a lot of data is about to come your way. Included with that will be some very draft uh changes to our municipal code, it will also talk about uh, kind of the exercise this evening. Where can we accommodate this in our community through the comp plan, so that's what that middle housing grant encompasses, and she'll be back again with more information. Did you give enough time to think of anything else? I forgot. I, no, we just did. Okay. Okay. And I'm still trying to figure out, I was online this evening, just trying to figure out a good link for to give you, and I was looking at the uh Washington Legislative Bills. But it doesn't list out everything that passed, so I'm, I'm trying to figure out some tool to get to you about specifically land use related. Bills that passed. Those are the things that. I was finally getting back to you, I think those are the ones that you had asked last couple of meetings. Yeah, of course.
Thanks, Kate. Hannah, what do you have for us?
Nothing.
Nothing, see you in two weeks then?
See you in two weeks.
Thanks, everyone, would someone mind making a motion for adjournment?
Would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I second the motion.
If you all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.